I was there, but that was worse.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Guthrie Planning Commission for Thursday, January 14th, and we do roll call.
Joe Chapel?
President.
Abe Gassimpor?
Here.
Chris Bryant?
Here.
Don McBride absent, and Jill Oxtons absent, but we have a quorum.
All right, are there any public comments that are general that are not related to any item on the agenda? Item number three, approval of previous minutes from the October 8, 2020 regular meeting.
I make the motion to approve.
All right, Joe Chapel?
Yes.
Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
Chris Bryant?
Yes.
Perfect.
The next item is number four, PC application number 20-014, discussion and possible action on a request to rezone a property located at 115 North Cedar Street from R1, single-family dwelling, to C2, general commercial district. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The property is located essentially on the eastern side of the temple over there on the other portion of Oklahoma and Cedar. It's currently, as it says, an R1 lot. The applicant's looking to rezone it to C2. In the maps provided, the comprehensive plan calls for that area to be multifamily. But as you'll see from the zoning map, there is C2 that's in that area and actually a decent amount of commercial along that portion of Oklahoma Avenue. So, from a land use standpoint, staff did not find any issue with it going to C2 and did not feel that it would have any type of negative impact to the adjacent area. So with that, staff recommended that the planning commission approve the rezone request from R1 to C2.
All right, and Mr. Chanlis is here.
Yes, the applicant is here if you have questions.
If the commission has any questions, is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item?
Mr. Chanlis? Are you gonna use it? Is this a vacant lot right now?
Yes, it previously had a home on it, which has been since demolished. And so, yeah, it's a vacant lot as it currently stands. And the applicant can, you know, talk more, but he's looking to fence it off and use it as additional storage or parking.
For the same business that he?
Yeah, exactly.
Any questions?
I make the motion for approval.
A second.
All right, motion second. Joe Chapel?
Guthrie Artist Showcase is brought to you by
Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
And Chris Bryant?
Yes.
Approve 3-0.
All right, our next item is number five, PC application number 20-011, discussion and possible action on a request for a special use permit to allow for a bar, taproom, and outdoor seating, Prairie Wolf Spirits, for a building property located at 118 East Oklahoma Avenue. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you indicated, this is for the Prairie Wolf Distillery that's down here on Oklahoma and Wentz. To be honest, this is one of those where it's probably just a outdated code being in place. What they're wanting to do is a taproom bar in the one building and then have outdoor seating next door. In most cases, those are types of uses that are encouraged in the downtown area, and we have other uses such as that existing, but our code does require a special use permit. When you look at the factors to be considered in the special use permit, there were none that were, if you want to say, of any issue. In a lot of cases, one of the things that comes into play is the parking. Because it's in the downtown, there's no specific parking requirement, so from the staff standpoint, there was nothing that would be of issue with this use, given that area. And because of that, staff recommended that the planning commission approve the special use permit as submitted.
Do we have any questions? I believe the applicant's here?
Yes, he is.
You mentioned the botic having an outdoor next door.
Mm-hmm.
What is next door?
Literally that grassed area that's out there right now with the fence around it.
Right there to the east of it?
Yeah. Yep, yeah, they're gonna have the actual taproom bar in the front of the building that's next to the distillery there that faces Oklahoma, and then the fenced open area will be turned into outdoor seating.
But their business would not affect the sidewalk?
No, absolutely not. It's all outside the right-of-way.
I make the motion to approve.
A second.
All right, Joe Chapel?
Yes.
Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
And Chris Bryant?
Yes.
All right, approve 3-0.
All right, our next item is number six, PC application number 20-017, discussion and possible action on a request to close a 40-foot by 129-foot portion of right-of-way located along Noble Avenue, adjacent to the former Taco Bueno site. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, as you indicated, this is over off of Noble, right next to, now I even forget what the side street is over there, but it's the former Taco Bueno site. The owners of it were looking at, or they've been marketing it and looking at other options, and through that, they came across the fact that the parking lot actually sits in right-of-way. So, as you see on the screen, that yellow area is pretty much their parking lot. When it came about, I got with ODOT, and we had a lot of discussion and some paperwork back and forth, and we determined that it was not state right-of-way, that it was actually city right-of-way. And then to further that, we could not find any evidence that it was an actual separate city parcel. It's just city right-of-way that's sitting out there. So, the way to go about them having the ability to, if you want to say dispose of that or vacate that, is to close that portion of the right-of-way, and then eventually they'll go through the district court process to formally vacate it, and then that portion will become part of their property, and they would have control on it. So, with that, staff did not have any concerns. There were no utilities that had any objection, and from the city's side, there was no objection. So, because of the, or with that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the closure of that right-of-way.
Questions, comments?
I see on your map there, Dan, you have that area marked with the red, and also it shows the same easement there in the front of the joining properties there, like the Missis and others.
Yes.
So, are they gonna be still existing, or are we gonna?
No, actually, yeah, interestingly enough, that actually is like a little separate parcel. It's not actually public right-of-way there. So, that was the other aspect, is all the properties to the west had their own property with no right-of-way. So, this literally is a little parcel or area of right-of-way that's kind of no man's land in that. And so, now it would make it more consistent with the developments to the west, and even the driveways and entrances and that would still be off of the right-of-way, or, you know, any improvements would have to go through permits, but again, it would keep their parking and their improvements actually their property.
Would that affect the building?
No, not, none at all, no. Actually, it'll help them, because like I said, it'll be under their control once they get through the process.
I make the motion to approve.
A second.
And that was Abe, you second?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Joe Chapel?
Yes.
Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
And Chris Bryant?
Yes.
All right, 3-0.
Item number seven, PC application number 20-012, discussion and possible action on a request for a planned unit development within the R1, single-family dwelling district to allow for the development of 314 residential lots on a 95.5-acre parcel to be known as Mission Hills Phase 2, located in the southwest quarter of Section 20, Township 16, north, range 2 west, between Davis Road and the existing Mission Hills residential subdivision. The PUD includes requests for exceptions to minimum lot size, minimum lot width, setbacks, lot coverage, street right-of-way widths, and perimeter utility easement widths. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not gonna go through this probably in a whole lot of depth, because there's a lot there, obviously. The developer or the applicant is looking to do a presentation, and I imagine that most of the public that is here would like to speak and has questions, so it'd be better to have that process go through. But in general, like you said, it's the back part of, or the western portion of Mission Hills. It's about 95 acres. They're looking at around 314 total lots. There will be a green area through there, an open space area. Some of it is floodplain, others just a drainage area. They'll also use it to accommodate their own drainage. As you indicated, there are exceptions that they're asking from the code. That's the large reason why they're going through the planned unit development, because the planned unit development does allow for exceptions to code requirements. As you indicated, the lot sizes are, the minimum lot sizes for R1 are 6,000. Their, I think, average lot they're looking for in there is about 5,500 square feet, some a little bit more, some a little bit less in that. And there's also the request for setbacks. They would like to have the homes a little closer to the street versus the 25 feet we have. They're looking at 14 feet in that, so there's some exceptions in there. As I indicated in the staff report, I gave a pretty extensive account of what's going on, some of the issues, so I'm sure you've read that. So, if there are any questions of you, the applicant, or even the public, I'll be here to answer any of those. If not, I'll put it back to you, the commission.
All right, we'd like to hear from the applicant now.
Good evening, Mason Schwartz, 522 Call Ford Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. I also have Mr. Zach Roach with me, Richard McCowen, and our engineer, Chris Anderson. As they indicated, I do want to give a little bit of an intro, explain some things, allow Mr. Roach to put on a brief presentation and follow up with a few conclusion issues, take any questions, hear from the neighbors, and go from there.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna start by saying that Ideal Homes is very excited to be here tonight. They're excited for the opportunity to bring this project to Guthrie, and they think it's a great opportunity for both our client and the city. My firm, what we do is represent developers and commercial operators all over the state for all different kinds of things. And we've been representing Ideal Homes for quite some time now, and I can say with confidence that Ideal Homes is a top-notch company and a unique residential developer within the state of Oklahoma. What Ideal Homes does, and what they want to do here today, is create a development community, residential community, that really focuses on community engagement and community interaction and experience. And specifically, what Ideal Homes is known for, or what they always strive to do, is meet certain demands in the market for key features of a residential community. And some of those key features that Mr. Roach and we're gonna go through tonight are specifically baked into this PUD for this project. And the main ones are, first and foremost, the amenities and the recreational facilities that an Ideal Homes community brings to the table, which requires, obviously, acreage out of the overall parcel. I think some of the ones you've seen in here in this PUD are things like the walking trails, the playground, the splash pad, et cetera. But there's also a focus on green space and open space, because these are two very important features that the market has indicated they feel are in high level of demand for new residential communities. The other thing we've seen with the market is that new and young homeowners want less lot maintenance, less property work, mowing lawns, et cetera, without losing square footage in their home. And so, that's what you'll see as well in this PUD, where you'll see a little bit smaller lot sizes, but homes with the square footage are not reduced accordingly. And perhaps tying it all together, the market has also shown serious demand for just a communal field. And I think that the importance of an Ideal Homes project is tying all those features together and creating a community, and not just a bunch of homes lined up next to each other. So, we believe what's before you today, the PUD, is exactly that. And specifically, you got the PUD, you have the next item on the variance, or I'm sorry, on the agenda is a preliminary plat. The PUD, the property is 95 and a half acres. It's west of Mission Hills. The project is bisected by the open space, and so about 80% of the project is actually on the northwest of that open space, which is not really next to the existing Mission Hills, but obviously the southeast portion of the project is. The property right now is zoned R1, single-family, so you might ask yourself, why are we even here today then? And that kind of brings us to the point of the PUD, which is to utilize the PUD process, which is exactly what the PUD is for, to specify and fine-tune some of the lot dimension regulations for the project. And you'll see those referenced in the staff report as exceptions or variances. From a technical standpoint, they're not exceptions or variances, they're just custom, you know, specific standards that we're writing into the zoning for the property. But the point's taken all the same, which is, they're slightly different from what would be allowed currently under R1. And the reason for that is not because Ideal Homes wants to cram a bunch of lots into this 95-acre parcel, it's actually quite the opposite. By allowing Ideal Homes the flexibility and the latitude that some of these tweaks on the lot size and lot width create, it allows them, from an economic standpoint and a project design standpoint, to create the project on the whole that provides overall more open space, less density, right? And so, by, you know, allowing these reduction of lot size and some of these other tweaks, you're actually looking at a project here with 3.9 or 3.29 dwelling units per acre, which is about half of what's permitted right now under R1 zoning. So, and to be clear, some of the lots will meet the current R1 standards, but this is all about flexibility. It's allowing Mr. Roach and Ideal Homes the latitude to create what they need to create from a design layout standpoint, to create overall a community that works within their design model. So, I think what you have here is a trade-off and a win-win, so I see it. Ideal Homes, through this PUD, gets the latitude they need to go forward with the project feasibly. On the flip side of that, I think you get, the city gets a less dense development, far less dense than what could be done currently under the R1 zoning. They get far more commitments from Ideal Homes, the developer, through this PUD, you know, codified, put and set in stone commitments as to open space, amenities, recreational facilities, et cetera, all of which, if Ideal Homes sold the property and your run-of-the-mill developer came through tomorrow, would not be required of that, the next developer. And I also think you get, with Ideal Homes, like I said, a top-notch company with a great reputation, a great track record, which is all the more important on this particular piece of property, because the history of it, which I'm sure this commission's aware of, is that the previous developer, Mission Hills, abandoned the project. And so, when you have a circumstance like that, where you've got a project abandoned mid, you know, halfway through it, in our experience, it's even more important that you have a developer that come in that you can trust, is gonna do what they set out to do. And Ideal Homes is, you don't do any better than Ideal Homes in that regard. So, I do want to turn it over to Mr. Roach, let him go through a little bit of what Ideal Homes does, who they are, what this is all about, and the specifics of why they need to make certain adjustments to different pieces of the lot dimension regulations. Like I said, we have the rest of our team here, and then I'm gonna finish up with a couple remarks before we toss it back to you guys.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Zach Roach. I'm Vice President Development with Ideal Homes. And as Mason was talking about, I just want to come and introduce myself and the company I work for. I'm here to tell you a little bit about who we are and what we do. To begin with, Ideal Homes is a builder developer. We have 20 developments stretching from Blanchard to Stillwater, primarily in the Oklahoma City central area. But me, more than just being a builder developer, we consider ourselves really a placemaker, because that kind of philosophy and the way that we approach our community design permeates every development that we do. And so, here today, I want to show you a little bit about that philosophy, kind of run you through some of the way that we view things, and hopefully give you a better feel for who we are. This slide right here is a development we have in one of our communities called Castlewood Trails. This is located in the northwest Oklahoma City Yukon area, and I want to draw your attention to a few things in this slide if I could. At the end, there we go. At the front of this slide is a landscaped area for a splash pad. In the middle of this slide is a pavilion with a seating area. And on the back of this slide is a large playground, you can see like a walking trail and a soccer field over to the side. And when we sit down to design these communities, we're trying to think of who our target market is. Specifically, we try and think, who are we gonna sell this to, and how may they access this area? Our target market tends to be young families and first-time homebuyers. We'll sell a home to anyone, but that tends to be who buys our homes. And so, when we're thinking about who's gonna use this and how they're gonna access this, that's first and foremost on our mind. In this case, what we were thinking about is a mother with a couple of young kids on a hot day, maybe she's got a kid that wants to come over here and play on the splash pad, maybe she's got a kid that wants to come over here and play on the playground. She can set up shop and have a commanding field of view in the shade in the summertime, be able to have eyes on the splash pad, be able to have eyes on the kid at the park, and have, feel safe about that. And safety is paramount when we're doing these designs. I want to draw your attention to another facet of this. You'll notice that there aren't any streets closed, there aren't any cars in this picture, and that's very much by design. This was an intentional layout that we did, because we want to keep kids away from traffic. I have three small children of my own, I feel like I'm constantly chasing those kids, trying to prevent them from running into traffic. And so, when we do our community design layout specifically for the amenities, we're trying to think again about that target market and how we can make that a safe spot for not only our patrons, but their children to run through as well. This is an example of a development that I've got in Norman called Little River Trail. It's actually about a half a mile where I live. My wife and children and I have used this walking trail quite frequently. And I want to draw your attention to kind of the backside of this slide. This is mature trees. I know you don't think it's possible, but we, as a developer, we love trees. We actually want to keep up as many trees as possible. I know developers have a bad reputation for seeing how many trees they can knock down with one, knock down with one blade, and that couldn't be further from the truth for us. We believe that God does a far better job planting trees than we could, and we want to leave up as many as we can. And to that extent, we try and preserve those. And so, this natural walking trail actually has some really neat features that I want to go through. I was able to lay this in, and I literally, I got out there in front of the guys on the blades, and I said, you're not to go past this area, you're not to go past that area, you're to save this tree, you're to save that tree, because I want this to feel as natural as possible. I did take a five-foot buffer strip of sod down the edges of this, so if there's any lions or tigers or bears that are in the woods, you feel like you have a little bit of a notification. But generally, I left it alone, and I think the results speak for themselves. And in particular, I'm actually very excited about Mission Hills. Mason was going through some of the trail system opportunities. Richard McCowen, who ended up talking here later, he's done a fantastic job of creating a walkable neighborhood. We're having interconnecting trails, walkability, encouraging people to get off out of their cars and take those trails and connect them into the different amenities that we're gonna have in this neighborhood. And so, using that spine, that drainage area that bisects that neighborhood, my goal is to lay out walking trails similar to this and to that, and have as many natural trees left as I possibly can while we do it. This next slide is an example of a large development, actually not far from here. This is called Valencia. This is a 600-acre development, 2,000 homes in it, and this is what Ideal Homes can do when we really have the opportunity to flex our creative muscle. This is one of seven parks and playgrounds in that development. This is a stocked fishing pond, it's one of six stocked fishing ponds. I did five miles of interconnecting trails that ran around there. That's $150,000 splash pad, that's $100,000 playground. And this specific park, again, this is one of seven, I did three pavilions at about $60,000. I did a baseball field, I did a soccer field, I have basketball goals just north of here. And so, this is the kind of amenity package that we envision bringing to Mission Hills. We're gonna have to tweak it, obviously, for size and scale, but these are the kind of things that we do. And I want to echo again what Mason said, you know, picking up in the middle of this, we want to make sure that, you know, we're making promises that we're gonna keep, and I think that you have to look no further than any of the developments I've got in the entire metro area to be able to see what kind of work we do and what kind of amenities we bring to an area like that. Mission Hills is a little bit unique. Normally, when I appear in front of planning commissions and city councils, I'm trying to paint a picture about what we're gonna do with our houses. And in Mission Hills, we've actually already built three or four houses, so you can go out and see and feel and touch what we're talking about. So, the product line and the type of homes that we're gonna bring, that's already out there, I'm just gonna be doing more of the same. So, this is an interior shot that I have in one of our stage model homes. Again, talking about our target market, we're selling to teachers, to nurses, to firefighters and police officers, those tend to be the people who buy our homes. Average size in here, 17, 1750, 1800 square feet, give or take, so it's gonna be in compatibility with what's out there right now. This is kind of giving you, again, a feel of that interior shot. This is a stage model home, giving you another feel of a living room and a staged shot of one of our model homes on the bedroom, so kind of giving you a sense of what type of housing stock we're talking about out there. curb appeal is one that I'm really particularly proud of my company for. In the last three to four years, we've really expanded our palette, our offerings, in terms of types of homes that we spec. Again, I'd point no further than to Mission Hills to go take a look at some of those if you have an opportunity. But we have really grown in what we can offer people. We feel that if people are gonna spend several hundred thousand dollars on a house, we want to pair something that they want, something that they love. And so, we have about four different types of genres of homes, and underneath each one of those genres is literally dozens of options that you can pick for your facade. So, I do a traditional kind of look, I do some more modern-looking stuff, we see a lot of that. I also have a modern farmhouse and a Colorado-on-the-prairie kind of genre, so just trying to stay current with the trends that we've got, and that we'd be bringing that kind of product, hopefully, to your community as well. The last piece of this, I want to take a minute to brag on the company that I work for. You know, Ideal Homes has been in business for over 30 years, we've built 10,000 homes, and we're not going anywhere. We've won literally every award that you can win in America for home building. We were named Builder of the Year by Builder Magazine, we won America's Best Builder, we won the National Housing Quality Gold Award for Excellence in Home Building. We are the first home builder in America to build a zero-energy home for under $200,000. We partnered with the Department of Energy to build 30 test homes to get that figured out, and our commitment, ongoing commitment to green building practices, to green infrastructure. And so, when we come to a community like yours, those are the kind of excellence that we bring. We're not gonna just go slap up a bunch of houses and leave. We want to create places, we want to create memorable places, and we want to create quality in that community. So, having said that, again, my name is Zach, and I'd be willing to open it up for any kind of questions you guys may have.
Do we have any questions for him right now?
The question that I have is, Dan could answer this, or is any portion of this is part of original Mission Hills plat?
No.
No. Are you gonna use the Mission Hills road access to your project, or you're gonna have completely a separate road and access to your property?
Yes, sir. Public streets, we will absolutely use those public streets to access our property. On the portion that is over on the east side, as Dan and as Mason referred to earlier, the bulk of the homes would be on the west side, but for what to infill that last portion, we would use those.
But you are gonna be using Mission Hills access roads?
Yes, yeah.
But you're not gonna have your own road, you're gonna have connected with Mission Hills with using the same road?
Yeah, we'll build our own, and then we'll build on to those roads that are out there, absolutely, yeah.
The area was platted, yeah.
So, you?
And I've got...
Is this the plat?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what, that was my next question.
Yeah, and I was just gonna clarify, you know, the area that they're developing right now did not have any plat associated with it. It was never recorded. Obviously, as you'll see, and I think everybody knows, they're tying in some of their proposed development to the existing platted Mission Hills, but again, to go back, the area in which they're developing does not have any plat or any recorded plat associated with it.
So, this property be totally accessed from Mission Hills?
This portion, I suppose I should introduce...
I'm just trying to clarify.
No, certainly. My name's Richard McCowen with Ideal Homes. These, this small number of lots here will take its access from the two stub streets that are currently in the original Mission Hills, and then this one on the cul-de-sac also will take access from that existing stub street.
And how many lots are those total? The one that they have, you have to use the access The one that they have, you have to use the access from Mission Hills?
I believe that 16 here is going to take a minute to count this group. It's got two different points of access. That's 56.
Oh, that was way over.
That's why I'm not counting.
And 16, so about 72, you said?
Seventy.
Yeah. So we're going to add another 72 families' access from the current Mission Hill the way it is already?
That's correct. The majority is over on the other side.
Over on the other side.
And on the original preliminary plat, there was access provided on to the next plats beyond that.
And this is our Guthrie plant? This is, right? This is what you... I mean, you mentioned about Yukon, about Norman, but this is what we're doing right in here. So the name is Plant Unit Development, so I'm just kind of concerned, make sure this is it, yeah.
That's it. That's the original Mission.
Do we have any other questions right now for these gentlemen?
And I guess the other side of the green belt will have a different entrance?
It'll have two entrances. We'll have one here a little further north and another one this location.
For Davis Road. And these are all going to have, what about the utilities? We have a city sewer, city water, or what?
Not city water. It's rural water.
Rural water.
But it will have a sewer... Yeah, they'll... All of the utilities require, you know, roads paved, the whole, you know, all of those improvements will be required. That's required of the code. Those plans or the improvement plans for that area will be submitted prior to the final plats being recorded, and then they'll be reviewed and approved at that time. And that, right now, we're in the stage to kind of set how it's going to develop, and that's where the planned unit development comes in, because the preliminary plat and any other development is going to be off the approved site plan or development plan of the planned unit development. The other aspect with the planned unit development, since I'm on approval, is it's tied to the land. So if for some reason they get the approvals and Ideal says, eh, we want to go somewhere else, and somebody else comes in, they're tied to the exact site plan, development plan, approvals and all that. And if they want to change it, it has to go through the exact same process we are today. So that's another important aspect of the PUD, is it does tie that land, regardless of owner or developer, to what is going to be approved.
You said homes are 17 to 1800 square footage?
Yeah, an average.
And single-family?
Single-family.
And single-story?
Single-story. Yeah, all of these are, yes. We have a few product lines I have to... Yeah, these are all single-story.
All right, well, I think we need to hear from the folks who are here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to turn it around and show the public what you're doing. Would it be all right right there?
Yeah, you're fine. No, you're fine. Because that's just for the PowerPoint, so, yeah, you're fine.
Yep.
I was just going to put a button on our presentation and then turn over the questions and we can answer if that works.
Okay, sure.
Just to follow up on a few things. The street access through the just Mission Hills was always planned to go through there. That's why they've got those end streets as they are. And so I think that the... I understand there's probably going to be some concerns with neighbors in terms of going through the neighborhood, but that's... Anybody would come in right now under R1 and develop, or had they always, you know, finished out Mission Hills development in the first place, it would have been that way. A couple more important points. This property is designated under the comprehensive plan for the future land use map as combination of the open space and then the single-family. And I think this particular development is perfectly consistent with that. It's that good combination of green belt, open space and single-family, which is noted in the staff report that I compliance. And I think the important part, and we're eager to hear and address everything we can with the neighbors' concerns, but I think the important part for this commission is to understand that this has to be evaluated as compared to its current zoning and what could be developed here right now. And the reality is that, like was mentioned by staff, by putting all of these commitments into the staff, into the BUD, we are restricting, really, on the whole, we're restricting the use of this property more than really what would currently be allowed under R1. Yes, we are reducing some of the lot sizes and tweaking the lot width, but when you're looking at it on the whole, the density that we would, the maximum density that we're going to be allowed to do under this zoning of this pod as compared to what's there right now, it's more restrictive is what we're asking for. And I think it, you know, specifically spells that out in the recommendation conditions in the staff report. We do agree to all of those, which is why staff, I believe, recommend approval, and we would ask for your approval of the same.
All right, thank you. All right, we'd like to hear from those who would like to speak on this item, and we'd ask that you would, you know, speak for a few minutes to allow others the same time. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Matt Gerard. I live at 314 Mission Hills, which is basically at the end of one of the roads. I got something for you guys. I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at this, but this is actually the Mission Hills covenants that you can get. I only got like two coffees, and I guess I'd like to have one. Basically, the way the neighborhood is built right now is based off of those covenants and the sizes of the lots. And the neighborhood as a whole believes that we have a standard to meet. And if they're going to add on to our neighborhood that we live in and use our road access, then they should abide by those same standards that we have with the lot sizes. I don't actually have the original plat that shows how far the house is sit back, but obviously, it's much further back than what theirs are. Our lot sizes, if you actually took the original plat of our homes versus theirs, our lot size is going to be twice the size of theirs. And also, they talk about 16 to 1800 square foot houses. If you looked at Venecia, they got a single-car garage, 1,000-square-foot house. That's concerning to us because, again, we have the standard that we want to build houses that are going to fit our neighborhood and keep the value of our neighborhood. We want... I'm sure you guys wouldn't want to break something in that would devalue our neighborhood or your neighborhood. The other, I had something else. And just, you know, this neighborhood is a great neighborhood. There's a lot of great community leaders that live in this neighborhood, and there would be a lot more people here today, but unfortunately, there's a community banquet going on, and a lot of those community leaders that would be here would still have a voice. And I'm trying to voice that out as much as I can, but I think, in the whole, I think you should honor the Mission Hills standard that we have right now and keep the lot sizes the way they should be and not make them smaller and hopefully wouldn't devalue our neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Yes. Real quick, just a question. And you all can probably answer this as well. Who currently enforces the covenants?
The homeowners association.
Is that association currently active?
I do not believe so, but some of the others could talk to its functionality. I would say, you know, from a general standpoint, no city, regardless, enforces private covenants. It's, again, through a homeowners association. And when those covenants are set up, they can be, in, you know, cases, more restrictive than that. They just can't be more lenient in that. So obviously, you know, in some cases, they could be more restrictive, but again, they can't be any less lenient. And obviously, if there's not something in the covenants, it falls back to whatever the zoning would have. But again, it's a private restriction that is done through the private entity.
Sure. Yeah. All right. Name and address for the record, sir.
Lawrence Buckley, and I live out in Mission Hills at 221 Penny Circle. First of all, I want to say Ideal Homes, they build a nice home. I have nothing against that. But I do have a problem with basically what the gentleman here was saying, while I grew up, and it involves this area right here. I could care less what you all do across the creek, because that's not going to involve Mission Hills.
Can you turn that just a little bit? So we can see what it is.
I don't agree with you using our streets to get to that. When you're so close to Davis Road here, you could build a street to go into. Furthermore, even if I lost my argument with you, I would want to restrict construction traffic going through the existing Mission Hills to build these homes here. It's already been dedicated to the city. We know what it's like being forced down the streets. I don't want the streets forced in the way they're written for us. And you know what happens with construction traffic. So I think something could be changed here to fill these lots out and not go into the existing Mission Hills. And even, cut it off. I could take you neighborhood after neighborhood and show you where they've added to existing development. And they never, they build right up to the quitting point of the first phase and never go through it. And why can't we do the same thing here? Now, the Mission Hills are going to test down, or what are we going to do with water? Are we going to...
If you could speak into the mic.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you could go back to the mic, sir, so we can... Thank you.
Are we going to lose water pressure that we add in all these homes? Have all the studies been done?
I mean, like I said before, all of that will be taken care of through, after all of the approvals. And there are certain pressures that they have to maintain for fire and all that that will be met. And that, as I indicated before, it's in rural water, in the rural water district in that, so there'll obviously be coordination there. The sewer will be of the city. But yeah, all the minimum requirements through the codes, the fire side and that will have to be met.
I don't, I'm not speaking for all of the other citizens, but for me, if we could separate from Mission Hills One...
Sir, you need to talk to them.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
If we could separate it from Mission Hill One, I'd be happy. Like I said, Ideal Homes builds a nice home, but the architecture that they're building today does not match what's in the existing one, and I'm here to protect my own interest out there. And like I say, I don't care what you do with the northwest development, but the little bit that's left in Phase Two, I think we could, I think something could be changed there a little bit. That's my health talk.
All right. Anybody else like to speak? Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Marla E. Sal at 419 Wagon Trail. And we're out, one of the main streets that they're talking about using to expand. We currently have a very prestigious neighborhood, and we don't want a one-car garage-type home to be built next to what we currently have as a three-car, two-car garage. We, as we have a covenant, and Matt has shared that and the concerns of Lawrence, you have that much traffic coming through? You're dealing with kids. We have small children that are playing, and everyone knows everybody, and you have that many homes and feeding that many cars. And then if they are smaller homes, that means their cars are going to be parked on the street. That's going to kind of chunk up the neighborhood. It's not going to be as prestigious because we all use our garages. So that's a concern that I have. We currently have a lot to where we're built 25 feet back. The city of Guthrie already has kind of failed. My husband and I, when we built our home in 2017, that the drainage issue, and you allowed another builder in there, and it was never resolved. And when we went to the city to try to get assistance, it was ignored, and they went ahead and approved all of the permits to allow that builder to do what he did. So we currently have three other lots that are draining into our lot. So that's a problem when you're going to be adding all these other homes further down, then all those new people are going to be dealing with water issues. I did contact Rural Water, and I asked them if they were aware of this possible development. They did say yes. I was concerned about the water pressures as well, because it's not that we don't want development in Guthrie. We do want that. We are very supportive of our community. However, it doesn't have to be 314 on 95 acres. You can do a smaller development, still get the, maintain the integrity of what we currently have, and make it a nicer advance where more people are living here if we start getting more people from Edmund, you know, people moving north. So I'm just concerned that the traffic issues, and I'm, I've watched how it floods in that southwest corner. 2019, the stop sign, water was up to the stop sign. The bridge was watched out. That's the reason they're not wanting to do a real, you know, using our streets. But there's certainly a street on Prairie Grove that they could use as an entrance and not utilize Mission Hills or the main entrance off of Division. And, you know, like Lawrence said, we're concerned about the construction traffic, and are they going to take care of, you know, the sediments? Protect where there's not any more land erosion when they're going through the building process? All of that is something that I think would keep the integrity of that whole area. I know that Dan mentioned something about it being a separate plot. Well, if you're using our streets, it's actually an extension of our neighborhood. It's not like a whole separate development. So in that aspect, I'm hoping that you all would consider the citizens that are currently here. We are, you know, loyal taxpayers and supporters of our community, that you would honor us to allow them. If you're going to build, you need to follow the integrity of what we've already started.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Derek Ezel. I live at 419 Wagon Trail. My whole issue, just kind of looking at the map, we've been on, since we built in 2017, we've been at the end of one of these roads that are supposed to be built out through the original neighborhood, okay? Because we have a longer driveway, we have spent four years now watching different construction trucks come down, run out of road, back into our driveway, to the point now that the, you know, pavement's starting to break away from the curb and everything else. So where I have an issue is right here, and I'll show you on the map, because I can talk loud enough where you can still hear me, but right here where Prairie Grove comes all the way down, the pavement runs out right here. Why could they not just pave that all the way through and make an access back here? Second point is, when I look at this group of houses and this group of houses, and then I kind of put the houses there, I'm not seeing a whole lot of green belt except right where it already is. You know what I mean? Do you see a whole lot of spacing in here? I mean, you see some areas like this and over here around the edges and stuff, but that doesn't look like any spacing to me. You know, it doesn't look like we're getting, you know, this giant green belt with these nice areas for our pets and our kids and everything else to play in. All we're asking for is, you know, if you're going to go and you're going to build this mess right here behind what's already there, then it's going to need to be spaced out and look like the other side, or else now it's no longer Mission Hills, it's whatever you're building in Phase Two. And as far as I know, when you originally, as a city, you know, said, we're going to go ahead and build a Mission Hills development, and we're going to do Phase One, we're going to do Phase Two, and we'll probably even have some more phases to it, they didn't imagine that, okay? They didn't imagine a driveway with 500 cars going down through there and still having to have kids and stuff playing there and say, here, you can play in this little half-an-acre lot that we made a park in. You know what I mean? If it was your kids and you guys were living here, you know what I mean? It would be a different situation. Or when you invest into your house and you say, okay, my house has been going up and going up and going up, and then somebody sees something like this and go, okay, how many thousands of dollars for how much money that we've had to pay in taxes are we going to have to pay for that? That's a problem. That's what you guys are here to protect us from. And that's why I wanted to say my piece about it. You know, it's not just about my property, but if you're going to use these existing roads and come through the neighborhood, it's mud, it's nails, it's all kinds of stuff being left in the street. And I can attest to it because I've watched them build every house along this street right here since I've been there. And there are other people in my neighborhood that have been there longer, but every one of these houses have filled in since I've been there. And now, since I'm right here on this corner lot, look, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 more houses before I even get to see any. before I even get to see any green down through here with half the driveway. So now all of a sudden I come down around the corner and I get to deal with cars everywhere in here, because they haven't nowhere to park. That's just my two cents, you know? You guys, like I said, it's the city, I've already, some of you may even know who I am already. You know what I mean? Because I've fought and fought and fought for four years with three different builders on top of the guy who built my house, okay? And got no help. You know, so you guys, you're here to help us.
Thank you. Name an address, please.
My name is Debbie Longnecker, I live at 322 Mission Hills Drive. I'm the last house on Mission Hills Drive on the right before this new addition, new plat for Mission Hills will be built. My concern is the traffic also, but not just the traffic in the addition. The traffic getting out from the addition onto Division. That hill is treacherous, coming from both directions, and then we have the apartments across the street. So you're going to build 71 more homes crammed in here, small little homes, onto what's already existing. So you're going to more than double what's there. So you're going to more than double the traffic that's going to go out onto Division from Mission Hills. It's a safety issue, guys, it's a safety issue for me. Then, another concern I have is, I'm a retired school teacher. You're building homes that are a lot smaller, your taxes are going to be smaller on those homes. Why not keep the addition the size it is, or at least Phase One, the east side of the creek? Keep it like it is, so the homes are nice big homes, put money back into the pot for schools through our property taxes. And if you want to build the smaller homes on the other side, fine, but let's keep the integrity of Phase One, Mission Hills, the way it needs to be, like it is now. So all the homes are cohesive, you drive in and it looks like this is all one neighborhood. Take your access road in off of Prairie Grove if you can. Make it safer for the kids that are living there in the neighborhood now, so these trucks aren't running in and out where the kids are playing in the street. That's what I had to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joe Webb, 3202 James Way. So, I'm probably just going to reiterate a lot that's been said, but I just want to make sure that our voice is being heard. We don't quite agree with the lot sizes that are being proposed. A lot of my concern is, again, related to kids, your kids playing. If you don't have enough driveways, if these are true single-family homes, you're looking two, three, maybe four cars. I don't think 14 feet off the street is enough to stick four cars in. So if we're shoving all those cars into the street, that blocks up your traffic, it reduces visibility. I know, I mean, if you've been around kids, you've got balls rolling out in the street, they're chasing them. If you don't have a clear path view, there's definitely a safety risk. I'd like to reiterate, I heard comments as well with the traffic trying to get out of Mission Hills. I understand that this development has always been partially developed with a plan of additional houses going in. But keeping the lot sizes the way they are will reduce the amount of families that are moving in and reduce that traffic. And again, put the cars back where they belong in the driveways and in the garages. I also do have some questions for the developers. They produced four houses, and like Lawrence, Mr. Butler said, they're nice houses. But as you can see in the covenants, the very, I think it's Page One, Page Two, states that the houses should be 80% stone, brick, or some sort of stucco. What they've built so far is mainly wood on the front, and it doesn't blend in with the current look of the neighborhood. So, again, my concern is probably more east of the creek in the green belt that they've got there, not necessarily west. With that blend and ensuring that they're going to match what's already there and keep that integrity of the neighborhood. Couple of my questions are, with the green belt, who's in charge of that maintenance? Are we going to try to create an HOA, or are they going to continue on paying it for the next 99 years? Or whatever the, you know, the timeline is there. Are they planning on having the city or the county pay the rest of Prairie Grove and the Davis Roads? Because, I mean, I live in the city for a reason. My wife grew up in the country, the non-paved roads are hard on your cars. That's going to reduce the property values there. If those roads aren't paved, nobody's going to want to drive down a half-mile washed-out road. So just wondering if those are going to be paved as well. You know, they also mentioned in their presentation, less lawn maintenance. Quarter acre is not a lot to maintain when you stick a 2,000-square-foot house on there. So what's the smallest lot size that they've got in this pud? And what's the smallest house size that they've got in this pud? Like, I think Mr. Gerard said, that they've got some plans on their site that offer a one-bed, or a two-bed, one-bath, one-car garage. So are those things that are being considered for this neighborhood? Because again, that's not going to match what's already out there, two- to three-car garages and four-bedroom houses.
Thank you so much.
What about those questions?
Well, let's hear from all the folks and then we'll give the applicant a chance to respond to the concerns. Yes, sir?
I'm Paul Backus, 3100 Backus Road here in Guthrie. Grew up and farmed, and that farm, the west side of that creek, I farmed that up to just about two years ago. Had weed in there, combined it, everything. Grew up and raised in Guthrie on that farm. Very familiar with Guthrie. Moved away with the Yukon for a while, and we just recently moved back. One of the things that I was involved with just this last winter is the tin horn washed out because of the flood you mentioned about. I'm personally the one who dug that tin horn out of my property that's on the west side of Davis Road and had the county put it in. Otherwise, you had access, all the people who lived further down on South Davis Road, they were having to come through to the Prairie Grove to get out onto Division. That's a dangerous hill. You, as, if you're pulling in onto Division, you can't see down the hill, and you've got traffic that's coming in at 55 and 60. You don't have a time to be able to get out, especially in my case, I've got a cattle trailer, I'm trying to pull up and out of there. So if we put those kind of homes in there, we're going to have to expand stoplights, not only at the main entrance that Mission Hills currently has, you're going to have to have another stoplight at Prairie Grove. Then, looking at the west side development, my property that I currently farm is on the north side. You've got, I think the name of it is Sandstone, Sandstone Drive. I guess that's an expansion, you know, an intention to maybe, you know, expand into my property at some point in time, I don't know. But nonetheless, you've got two that are dumping out onto Davis Road. That's a huge amount of people. And so where's Davis Road's going to either feed into Prairie Grove, again, that dangerous intersection, or it's going to go to Industrial? And Industrial's already backed up as it is when you've got auto-quit traffic coming out of there. So I'm very familiar with the area, and like I say, I farmed it all my life. And I'm happy to see ideal coming in here, I think that's a nice home. But I think the amount of lots that they've squeezed into that small property is more than what it should be. And I think Guthrie has an important decision to make now as to whether or not we want to allow basically a development that's going on in Edmund, but allowing to make a whole lot more money here and squish down our living area as far as the lot size, and then put a ton more people, that Guthrie just doesn't have the infrastructure to support, referring to Industrial, Prairie Grove. You don't have a bridge even allowing you to go west on Prairie Grove, that washed out in 1995. So you're really, without a lot of improvement to Davis Road, I don't see that going forward, not as it is. I mean, if you had twice the lot size, more comparable to what Mission Hills One currently has, I could see that being tolerable. But you're going to have to make a four-lane out of Davis, you're going to have to make another four-lane, maybe even a six-lane out of Industrial, build, handle all the traffic. And then everybody's going to be backed up with traffic lights because of just the sheer magnitude of people you've got coming out of there. So I think this is an important decision for Guthrie to make. And, you know, if we had a development here that was similar to what they're doing in Edmund, I think that would be fine. But I think we've doubled the amount of capacity that we should have in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, can I ask you a question real quick? What's your experience with the flooding in that area?
Well, just like she said, it was up over the stop sign, what was it, two winters ago?
No, it was 2019.
2019, yeah. And it washed, it's over.
Excuse me, excuse me, yeah, thank you.
The tin horn that, the tin horn that washed out, I could walk through. So it's like a six-foot tin horn. And it washed it about 300 yards into the creek area in my property.
So flooding like that, what's that going to do, that proposed green belts and all the hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment that they're proposing?
If you have, if you could come to the, thank you.
I'll repeat my question. So if we've got flooding issues like that, granted, it might be once every 10 years like we've seen on Highway 33 with the new bridge out there. But if they invest that much money in that area, it'll just take one flood to come through, and now those are some costs, and they'll have lots of repairs to do. So maybe that goes back to my question on the HOA, who's going to fund all that?
If I can, real quick, on the flooding issue, yes, there's a portion that's actually designated floodplain. There are specific requirements for that. As I indicated before, there'll be a full engineered drainage plan for the entire property that will accommodate, you know, the expected future, you know, all that. That's, you know, simply that's what the engineers get paid to do. And so all of that will be required, will be reviewed and approved prior to any dirt moving. One of the things is, is Davis Road is a county road, it's not a city road. I do not know, well, in fact, I'm, we cannot force them to do improvements on that road, it's not in our jurisdiction. Obviously, the portion of Prairie Grove that goes on that, on the south side there, and that is in the city limits until it hits Davis Road in that. But again, the Davis Road is in the county, so unfortunately, that does add some issues with it in that. And just in general, going back to the, you know, the traffic issues and that, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer by any means in that. We don't have any requirements that necessarily say you have to submit a traffic study with every development you do. A lot of the traffic studies are based on compatible uses, meaning single-family, single-family. A lot of times, the traffic comes into play when you're getting much more intense uses, maybe commercial, very high-density to single-family, that. Not to say that it isn't there. I'll just add, not that I'm saying that it needs to be done, but there is a provision in our planned unit development that says the planning commission can recommend or the council can require special studies if they feel necessary to help with the approval process, whether it's an economic study, an environmental study, a traffic study, that type of thing, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to answer some of the questions that were raised?
Sir, I'm going to go back to slide up real quick.
Do you have the? Oh, and real quick, I'm sorry, and I didn't answer the gentleman's question as well. But yes, the open area would be, have to be under an HOA, and I'm sure the applicant would talk about that, but it would not be deeded to the city or that for that. It would remain as part of the development, so there would be an HOA that would have to maintain it through its existence of time.
Zach and I are going to try and tag-team some of the answers, but I, one thing that got touched on that I think is, let me dive into this, the 14-foot setback, I wanted to go back to this slide, only is relevant to the parts of the house that are not the garage. So, different than the current Mission Hills neighborhood, this will all have sidewalks, and the setback for the garage is 20 feet, just like it is in all the other 20 neighborhoods that we build all over the whole metro. That's the perfect amount of space to park one car. I live in Norman, in one of our neighborhoods, that wasn't a planned unit development, and Norman has a 25-foot setback also. And 25 feet, we moved away from that years ago. Oklahoma City is 20-foot setback, that's always how it's been in my career. The 25-foot setback encourages the double stacking of cars, and so you end up with that second car parking over the sidewalk. And you see that a lot in Norman, you'll see four cars parked in the driveway, and pedestrians, or, you know, mom pushing a stroller, has literally got to dive out into the street to go around four parked cars in the driveway. And so what, you know, the vast majority, in fact, all the house plans except one have a two-car garage. And so there's adequate space to park two cars in the garage plus two in the driveway and still not have the sidewalk obstructed. However, something that's really been amazing, especially during the last year, where our neighborhoods have really become more popular than ever because of the green belts and the open space and people getting out and walking, because we're all cooped up in our houses, and we're like to have, you know, these outdoor amenities. But pulling that front porch closer to the street creates a kind of conversational dialogue with the sidewalk. And the neighborhood where the house is farther away, the less likely the porch is ever going to get used, because you don't have that conversational relationship or conversational distance to, from sidewalk to porch, like we allowed ourselves to build way back in the 1920s that give, you know, historic Guthrie that really charming character. So all we're asking to do is pull the living portion of the house forward, but there's still room to park two cars beyond the sidewalk on every single house, including the one little house that happens to be my favorite. It is 1,000 square feet, two-bedroom, two-bathroom, one-car garage. That house is really popular for, you wouldn't believe how many times, we sell it twice, where a young mother and her retired, the grandmother of the kids buy, you know, one, three doors down from each other. They're really great houses. In, today in the United States, 27% of all households are one-person households. And when we think about neighborhoods, single-family neighborhoods like this, we're thinking about, you know, the Cleaver family, you know, Ward and June and their two boys. That's less than 21% of American households today. And so we build these neighborhoods, almost 25% of the people who buy our neighborhoods are empty nesters. And they're moving, you know, from other parts of rural Oklahoma to be closer to high-quality medical care. And most importantly, they're moving here to be close to their grandkids. They're wanting to get away from the complexities of, you know, rural life, unpaved roads, all the things that we're talking about. Certainly, there are growing pains involved with development, more stronger infrastructure comes. Zach's going to talk a little bit about the road improvements. And certainly, we looked at it during this discussion. We would absolutely, actually, can you hold that and I'll point? We would totally be happy to add an additional street here. That way, we'd take the pressure off of your entry. I did a quick count, it's kind of fuzzy, the lots that were platted here, there's about 61 that I think was counted. We don't know how to get across this because of the steepness of the slope. And there was a question, a concern, let me come back to my phone.
Thank you.
There was a question raised about silt and erosion and mud. And the fun thing about this, we're downhill from all the built houses. Everything we're going to be doing on these east lots is already downhill, sorry. The mud can't run uphill into your existing homes. And we wanted to stay away from connecting across here primarily because the slope is so steep and it really would create some instability. So if we're happy to make a concession to connect here and have all the construction traffic on this big group down here on the south, and then this little 16, you know, that would be, that's certainly something we would be willing to do. If I could also talk a little bit about lot size, these lots are five- These lots are five thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. So they're two hundred and fifty square feet smaller than your standard. I mean, that's a really, really small difference, right? It's smaller than half a garage. Or it's roughly that size. It adds up. It adds up. It's more land we can put into the green belt system. There was a question around flooding. We don't have it, we're showing the green belt all one-colored green. There are several detention ponds that are in this design that are all up, upland from the flood area. And, and certainly, Chris Anderson can talk more about the engineering of all that. But, you know, we're very aware and concerned in all of our communities about flood control. And I'm gonna let Zach talk more about the, the mandatory HOA and our history with that and how that'll be ran, and then also about some of the improvements to the section line regulations.
Thank you, Richard. Yeah, so I wanna, I wanna briefly touch on the topic of HOAs. The HOA that exists does absolutely cover Section One of Mission Hills. It does not cover the unplatted portion of that right now. In fact, that was something I wanted to check before we even entertained looking at this. And so, every homeowner, every one of my twenty neighborhoods, we have a homeowners' association that is active, it is a dues-paying homeowners' association, and is managed by a professional homeowners' association up underneath it. And so, I'm talking about the amenities, and I think that's a really good point that got raised, is, is how would you pay for that? Well, part of the reason that we have the number of lots is, is because we invest so much money into walking trails and into splash pads and into playgrounds, we have to have the financing vehicle to be able to support those long-term. Because when we walk away, we don't wanna have a neighborhood that can't sustain itself. We wanna have a fully functioning neighborhood that can continue in perpetuity after we leave that. And so to that extent, we absolutely will come in here, create a homeowners' association. We will require that dues be paid. It will be an active homeowners' association. It will pay for all the amenities. And it will also pay for, quite frankly, the frontage that's existing there right now. So we'll assume that, take that over, pay for the landscaping, the maintenance, the mowing of that, and that will all be part and parcel with that HOA that we create and be baked into the cake with the dues that we start. And so, yeah, we'll absolutely have that funding mechanism there. And that's gonna be something that we do. And that, the other, the other thing that's interesting about the way that we do that, we have an attorney named Matt Wynton who writes all of our covenants. He's written every one for the sixteen years that I've been in Ideal Homes. And we write those covenants so that, that we're making sure that we're policing people. It gives us the ability to make sure that nuisances, where it comes to vehicles or trashcans or any one of a number of things that are just common nuisances, we can police and make sure that those things don't continue to be nuisance. It has teeth in it, has fighting capabilities, and we enforce those in every neighborhood. One of my favorite covenants that we enforce is, is the two-tree covenant. That's something that we do in all of our neighborhoods. Richard mentioned sidewalk. We'll also mandate that every home that we build has two living trees. And we're gonna come by every year and check and make sure, 'cause we know that the number one thing you can do to maintain property values long-term in a development is have living trees. And so we make people do it. And if they don't, we, they get nasty letters from us and they get tired of hearing from us. But we finally, you know, they, they will get compliance. So, I, I can speak from experience, having, having talked about that, you know. We're talking about drainage areas and amenities. I live, I also live in an Ideal Homes neighborhood. I live adjacent to a drainage area. If I show, if I, if you, if I told you it was a drainage area, you wouldn't believe me. It, it's a beautiful area. It's an area where my kids go down to the creek. They look at the crawdads, they look at the toads, they look at salamanders that live down there. I have the, what we call the, the clean play areas that are not, they're absolutely up and out of floodplains, that if you wanna go play on the swings or splash pad, you're not trying to go get muddy. And those, those are gonna be away from water areas. We also believe in incorporating natural elements into what we do, because we know that if we can get kids outside and walking into nature, they're gonna be a lot more likely to respect that and to desire that, and they're gonna, they're gonna be a lot more likely to value that as they go forward and become voting adults and, and later on in life. And so, yeah, it's, it's kind of a both and for us. There's gonna be natural play areas where we can do that. And there's gonna be the traditional clean play areas with parks and sanitized areas, which will absolutely be away from the water. And we would not be putting kids down where, where heavy water flow would be. So, some things to talk about that. Another one that I'd heard come up was a discussion on Davis Road. And I just wanna say, I agree. I don't like the idea of having a, 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 a rock road over there. We've had some preliminary discussions with the county, and we're talking our way through that, but we think we wanna get that paved and we wanna do that, you know, as soon as we can over there. And I think that's gonna, you know, change the feel of that area, 'cause we don't wanna have dust and dirt and grime over on that road over there. And so we're broker in a deal right now to see if we can get that paved. There's a couple of details to be worked out. The county's absolutely expressed interest in partnering with us on that. It'd be a good deal for them, it'd be a good deal for us. And we're, we're committed to getting that done, so.
All right. Is anyone else on your team planning to present?
Did we, did we cover everything? Did we, did we get, did we leave anybody's question?
Yeah, I got one question. What about the pipeline? What happens when they gotta rebuild or redo the whole pipeline with that pipeline? Nineteen fifties is when the pipeline was put in. So, you know, two years, they could be one hundred pipeline.
So, speaking of all of our development, it's a great question.
What do you ask? Just, just for people watching at home, you asked about a pipeline that was running through the Mission Hill.
There's a gas pipeline that runs behind our houses on-
It's on the plat.
Yeah, it's on the plat.
It's a gas pipeline.
So we've incorporated that setback, so anything that they have ever been in there, everything is absolutely outside of that. And we make sure we don't put any better stuff.
And then you also talked about sidewalks. How would that, how would that correlate with the old house that they're there?
So we're gonna put sidewalks on all the drainage roads that we do. Go ahead and put sidewalks in there. And then we're gonna do walking trails that'll connect the neighborhood from those sidewalks to other parts of the neighborhood. So that'll have all that going forward.
I think he's talking about our current front yards. Are you gonna put sidewalks there or maybe let's put sidewalks there with one of those HOA nasty letters?
No.
Okay.
I won't do that.
And same with the two-tree requirement. If, if we fall underneath the HOA rules, I don't have two trees up right now.
No, your HOA, your HOA exists on your plat.
So we don't have an HOA?
You don't fall up underneath a order of concrete cars. You guys get, you know.
So we don't have to take the birds, I mean, like-
If, if you wanted some- If you want to buy it. Help bring in your HOA back to life, and we can be of any assistance with that. We would obviously, certainly, you know, if you want some tree planting in your entry monument, I mean, that, that-
What if, what if, what if we put a gate at the front of our entrance? Would that not make that a private room?
No, I was gonna say, you can't do that, 'cause, you know, throughout Mission Hills, those are all public rights-aways. I know it was commented there are streets, but they're not private streets, they're public rights-away. So there's no ability to block those off in any manner.
And the other question that I had too is on, if they're talking about building the access to be able to get to these ones behind, are they gonna go ahead and work on creating a right road to where, where it goes to the end of the neighborhood now? Actually, it should probably just be paved all the way down to Davis.
Uh, we, yes, we would pave it down at least-
Right, right, like that green block. That's where the, that's where the pavement ends now. Okay, so you drive them down through there.
Yes, we, we would extend this down to the new entrance, for sure. I think without question.
Or else it would just be dust and dirt on that backside.
Yeah, and, and we're, we're trying to create a, a beautiful new selling environment that you're gonna be proud of and that all of our future buyers are gonna be proud of. Yes, sir.
Well, we're on a subject with the, the streets, with Prairie Grove and Davis Road. So, why would you not go ahead-
We need, we need you guys, we need you at the microphone.
Sir, why would you not, why would you not go ahead and pave this portion and this portion at the same time if your expansion of this zone is, you know, awfully intentional?
Yes.
Furthermore, being a farmer, right downstream on the other side of this road, it's off the picture.
Yeah.
I don't wanna be flooded by additional watershed coming off of all these homes that are over here. You're not gonna capture the water.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're not, you're not gonna capture the water off these homes on this retention pond.
I'm, I'm calling my engineer up here.
I was gonna say, time to bring the engineer in.
Also, all that is mechanical engineer and-
Gentlemen, gentlemen, you have got to start talking into the microphone.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, nobody can hear you.
Good evening. Chris Anderson, SMC Consulting Engineers. And I've worked on their projects since nineteen eighty-two, when I started doing this for, for a living. As I said, we haven't, haven't done a final drainage plan on this yet, but in looking at the, the topography and everything, we, we did incorporate detention ponds into it. Now, I will say that the original Section One of Mission Hills, when that came through, there was no detention ordinance in the city of Guthrie. I've had several meetings with, I had a meeting with Dan when we first started on this. I've also met with your city engineer, Bill Myers, and discussed this. And there is a drainage ordinance and a detention ordinance in the city of Guthrie now. And so we knew that when we started. And we have designed in several places, detention pond here, 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 and here. So we, we're picking up all our different areas. And as, as the gentleman pointed, there's a ridge line here. So a lot of this actually comes down this way and doesn't come to here. It actually crosses a, a little structure there. And so that's why we've got this larger pond here, but that's where most of this is coming. We've got a drainage system that comes to that, that will detain it. And our detention is designed so that we don't release more than the historic amount that's going there now. So we're detaining everything to the historic flow. Now, if there's issues downstream with the larger structure there, that may be something that you have your city engineer look at. Maybe that structure needs to be larger or something, you know, that's something that needs to be looked at. But we will detain all the water coming off of this zone to historic amount.
One other point to that, please.
At the microphone.
That's a microphone. Thank you. This Prairie, Prairie, I'm sorry, this is Davis Road coming down here. This is my property here to the north again. My property to the north, and this is Davis Road. I've had tremendous amount of that flood that you're talking about. I had a tremendous amount of water coming right along that north edge. If you look at that property, there's a big, there's a big ravine between my property and yours. And the water that came out across Davis Road is what washed out Davis Road. 'Cause it used, it used Davis Road as a creek. And it's like I live on Bacchus Road. People were saying, hey, that's impressive. You've got a road named after you. I said, it's not impressive. It's, it's a road. And actually, because it's District County Number One, it's actually a dry creek bed. It's not a road. And Davis Road is exactly the same. And if you're talking about putting blacktop down, the first time we get another gully washer like what happened two years ago, that blacktop is gone and it's on my farm. It's not on a road anymore. The only thing you're gonna be able to put in there that's gonna hold is concrete. And again, now you're gonna have a nice concrete, like they've got in Los Angeles. They got those concrete creeks. That's what you're gonna have on Davis Road. So, four things to think about. Right now, the only water that goes across Davis Road is, again, the six-foot tin horn that I had to pull out of my creek and take out back to the road so Logan County District One could put it in.
Down here.
For it. Or I agree.
Are you aware of the other tin horn that goes up what we've got, the detention pond here?
Yeah, there's a little bitty tin horn.
Microphone.
There's a little bitty tin horn here that's plugged.
Right.
And that goes right onto my property.
Right, right. And that's what we got detention there, 'cause that's for most of the-
And there's another tin horn right here that's plugged.
Yeah, so the point would be, so if you've got water coming off of yours down here now, then we would get those unplugged and work with the county and make sure that's all coming down.
Well, where do they go? Where do they go? Is the tin horn goes this way, which again, goes to my property. So I've got-
We would detain our, our water before it goes onto the, there's another tin horn there. Our survey didn't pick it up. We did pick up the one here. If there's one here, then we can design detention in there also to, to keep our historic amount before it goes across.
Just remember, everything-
And, and keep it all from going down to here.
This is all uphill for me. You know how water flows, along with other things. So, so everything that's coming down, it's gonna hit the bar ditch on the west side of Davis Road.
Correct.
And then it's gonna flow over and it's gonna come into my property.
So we would detain it before it got off into that lake.
Hmm, you better have some pumps. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, and then we'd like to kinda wrap this up with commission members.
I'm Marla Isal, and I just wanna add to that. We're concerned about the water, of course, but I'm hoping you all are kinda seeing that with what they're wanting to develop, they would be selling homes to people that would, you know, essentially have the possibility of having a flood. And then their insurance and everything, do we wanna deal with that? Why can't we go back to the drawing board and work with the county on these roads? Because when we had that spring storm in twenty nineteen, the bridge at Davis going up to Industrial was washed out. And the county waited several months before they ever put it back in. So, you're dealing with, I think we need to work with the county to think about the integrity of this whole area. And then also going back to the drawing board with, with this many homes in, in that small acreage, that they're building on all this. Yeah, they say that they can engineer the water, but there's still the potential of a major flood, and then they're selling, and then those people are our citizens, and they would run the risk of having endanger to their finances to experience that. So that's just something else to think about that could possibly go down the road. And then, they mentioned about the green belt and all the play zone areas. Our neighborhood is very nice. The townspeople come out during Halloween. We love seeing the townspeople. But what would be the way to keep them out if they wanted to experience our splash pad or our walking? Is that all gonna be public area now because there's no gated community? And then anybody in the city can come out and experience it? But yet it would be in our neighborhood? Things to think about. I just think that we need to go back to the drawing board and work with the county on, on the issue about the streets and the water issues. And I ask that you not make a decision tonight.
I just wanna respond to one thing that was just said, and then two minutes at most to wrap up. We're not gonna be selling homes to people that are flooding their properties. There is a drainage ordinance in place now, as was mentioned. The engineering will all be in place with that, work with the city, retain all the water that runs off historically. We have a legal duty to do that. And that will all be fleshed out and whatnot in the, in the engineering part of this development. But this, this planning commission and I, who's charged with making land use decisions in terms of compatibility and use and zoning. And I understand, I understand that the homeowners of Mission Hills want, what, on this property that we're talking about tonight on the east side of this, uh, east side of the green belt area, they want an extension of what's already there now in Mission Hills. I understand that. But the reality is, is that that's not going to happen under the property's R1 current zoning. It's just not. This is an unfortunate consequence of what happens when developers, developments halfway through go bankrupt or, or go under on the project and things quit halfway through. And you're, under the current R1 zoning, you're not gonna have someone come in and put in the lot sizes that are currently there in Mission Hills. You're not gonna have someone come in and put the driveways in. In fact, the current sidewalk, sidewalk standards wouldn't allow for it. And so, the question for this, for this commission is not whether or not our project on the east side matches exactly with the existing Mission Hills. It's whether it's compatible and it blends and it's, it's a correct step down zoning. And on a broader scale, whether or not Ideal Homes and this project as a whole is, is something that's appropriate and beneficial with the area around it as compared to what, what could be done under any run-of-the-mill development under the current R1 zoning. And as a staff report, the professional staff has pointed out, this is compatible with the Mission Hills to the east and the remaining properties to the north, the south, and the west. And it's compatible with the comprehensive plan. It's, we believe, something that's going to be a great opportunity for this area and the city of Guthrie at large. And for that reason, we would ask for your approval and happy to answer any follow-up questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, comments for these gentlemen or amongst ourselves?
Well, I have a couple of questions. My first question is, if, the, Dan, does the city of Guthrie has any obligation whatsoever to maintain the roads in the Mission Hill or this new project?
Yeah, public roads. Any, any roads that are dedicated to the-
But what is the role of HMO? What is, what do they do then?
Well, the HOA, you know, outside the roads are, you know, again, they have their jurisdiction or their area. It, it's a lot of times architectural, design of homes, what you can or can't have parked in your driveway. I mean, there's a multitude, the color of the homes, you know, all of those elements are typical of an HOA. Some delve more into some of the zoning requirements and that, but typically, a lot of them have to do with the design and upkeep of the properties.
The Mission Hills, that do they all pay any homeowner association fees?
No. One of the things that attracted us to the neighborhood is there is not a paid HOA.
Yeah, right.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I have, because this, the only concern that I have, I welcome your project. I mean, this is something in there that the Guthrie needs and probably we could use. But the only problem that I personally have is that frontage there, that you have 10 acres, you're going to build 70-some houses that they're going to be using the entrance to the Mission Hill. Because apartments cross the street, which is really a highly traffic. You're looking at 70-some piece of lots there, an average of one and a half vehicle, you're looking at about 120 vehicle daily is going to be go through Mission Hills extra beside what they have. Those, that's the concern that I have. If we can't get it away from there, or unless we do some kind of traffic study to find out what it's going to do.
We would certainly be willing, right here, right now, to modify our request to add an additional entrance here and extend Prairie View down, that's not right, it's, this street down to the new entrance, so that we're not putting traffic through the existing Mission Hills neighborhood.
Just be the 16 lots up there.
These 16 lots up here, we can't really get to them without coming through the.
Well, if we can avoid that, I mean, that bottom part, then that's.
This is the significant, it's huge, well, quite substantial increase.
Well, I mean, you've got to understand, these folks in here, they got over an acre, and then you're going to build seven houses in one acre. Almost 7, it's 43,000 square foot that you're building 7,500, I mean, 5,700 square foot that you're building seven houses in one acre lot. So, that's what the concern is. I mean, you know, that traffic there. So, if we can avoid the traffic.
Yeah, we're totally happy to make that comment.
But as far as the flooding and what they do, I mean, they're investors. That's what they do, buyers beware. So, that's their business and they say problem. I don't think should be your concern.
So, they did make the comment that 250 square feet adds up. So, how much, how many houses are we going to take away from the plan if they go back to the original size and setback and acreage? How many houses come off that plan if you add that 250 square feet back into the lot size and match what's already currently being built or been built?
I'm not certain exact number, but I'll tell you this. If we're talking about what's east of the drainage here, and I don't want this point to get lost, I think, because this was facing this way, but I do think it's a very important concession. By willing to extend this part of Prairie View and then connect here, you are giving this outlet, right? And so, even if it's five or six more lots than what is currently allowed in R1 zoning, somebody could come in tomorrow in R1 zoning without having to come before this for rezoning and extend from this current, without, from these current, through Mission Hills, without putting in what we just agreed to, which we will write into the PUD and make sure it is qualified in law. And so, I think that that pressure release valve that was just discussed and agreed to here is really a critical part of that that would not be required under R1 zoning if someone come in and put maybe five or six plus homes in, but not this one.
To answer your specific question, that 250 square feet times 314 adds up to 1.8 acres, and that's about nine and a half houses. So, it doesn't really move the needle from a traffic standpoint, but if you think about a park, you know, the play areas and all of the different amenities, all of which are built above the floodplain, we don't put any of those kind of investments down where they can be washed out. And again, we're doing all of this, this additional detention to make sure that we're not adding to the flood condition through that major creek that runs through there. So, it's, it's, the 250 square feet matters because we're able to aggregate it into the amenity collection and make, and the part of the HOA fees that are annual and aren't very substantial go toward the mowing and maintenance and upkeep of all of that equipment and, you know, paying the water bill on the splash pad and all of that kind of thing. I mean, it, 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 it's a, it's a basket of well-worked-out things that tie together in order to make it all work. And so, the 250 feet matters. Can we still make the project work without it? Yes. Will it be a better project? No. It'll be a diminished project. And that's where, you know, we're trying to build the best neighborhood that we can build and take away any kind of, you know, waste in order to move it over here to put it in places that really matter to people.
I think that's where we disagree. It's not a better project if you make smaller lot sizes. I think that's where I disagree.
Well, the 250 square feet from your 6,000-foot in your R1 zoning, and if you, and we all know the land. There's pipelines, there's floodplain, so to use round numbers like this are not exactly accurate. However, at, you know, we're typically able to get on 6,000-square-foot lots, five and a half homes per acre, and on 95 acres, that is, that's 522 houses. So, there is a version of this with less amenity at 6,000 square feet, and it's more houses. So, it.
Minus the floodplain, because you can't build all that.
No, of course, minus the floodplain, but I.
You shove 500 houses in there, you're going to have a whole lot of problems with all that stuff.
We're talking about 314 houses, and having meaningful common area, meaningful open space that's going to be a great neighborhood asset. And to strip out an extra nine, 10 houses doesn't change the overall size and scope and feel of the neighborhood, but it does take away land that's available for building those amenities, and that would be unfortunate. So, that's why we talked about the 250 square feet matters.
The hard part for us is that.
I'm going to yield and might be going back to you.
The 250 square feet matters to you guys, but it doesn't matter to us because right now, I've got three cars that drive by me. I got, on average, on a Friday afternoon, I've got five or six kids playing in the front yard. Or, we have a neighborhood to come over, neighbors, we watch a movie on our garage door. Now, I'm going to have up to 60 cars driving by me. You think I've got kids that are going to be playing in the street anymore? No, they're not. The green belt that you're talking about, all I see is unused land that you can't build a house on. I see the walkways, yeah, that's going to be up by the creek, down the pipeline or around there. I see those things, but those are nice things, but you're still having whoever builds there pay for them. We like the way our neighborhood is. Everybody knows each other. We don't have 60 to 120 cars driving by us. That's the issue that we have, and we want to keep the value. We don't want to make the lot smaller to devalue what we already have.
If I'm understanding right, or you agree to put another entrance here off one road, all right? Would you agree to draw it on there? Would you agree to closing off the street and make the two additions?
I can't do that by law.
Oh, I can't just, I can take it if that's our neighborhood's benefit.
Dan, can you respond?
Well, yeah, I was going to say, you know, you get into the whole traffic circulation, the 911 emergency management, the whole nine thing with public roads. We can't just arbitrarily close off public roads in that. And as I said, in the existing development, as well as the proposed development, there's.
I understand why Guthrie can't do that by continuing up on city and all of this.
They may have different ordinances that say, we're going to arbitrarily cut off public rights of way and have these other, you know, issues. I don't know. Every city's different.
Although I'm asking.
I don't know by, you know, I don't know.
Yeah. And as far as this goes back here, still not through the law. It's not affecting all the law. I know the fact that you don't have to come too here to build these houses, we're in construction traffic. If you're going to build a road here, you can have a little temporary road.
If you can, to the mic.
You think you build these houses.
Can you please use the mic? Thank you.
You build these houses here with the temporary road. Don't drive through the main addition. Don't tell me it can't be done, because I've done it myself by law.
In terms of shutting the road down, I can't shut that down and direct it.
Well, I think we need to do some studies on that because I know a lot of neighborhoods do.
What I would say, though, is there's a couple of things going here that I think they're going to diametrically, that they're going to change kind of what you guys have seen. One, you got one building, and so, as opposed to having six or seven or 10 in there that are not coordinating, trust me, when we have an issue with erosion control, it's my fault. When we have an entry, we have an issue with trucks backing in and trying to stop people, we have one point of contact. And so, what we're able to do is we're able to coordinate that at a given level. So, here's what I would tell you. I agree that where we can, when we do trash traffic, we direct our trash traffic to an entrance. We'll hold our guys accountable. What I can't tell you is, is that if there's a dump truck driver that chooses to use a public road and comes sailing down there, that's never going to happen, because I'd be lying to you if I told you that. I'm not going to do that. What I can't tell you is, is I'm absolutely willing to work to coordinate that through our construction stuff. Especially since, Richard, you're in that new entrance there, that's going to make it a lot easier. If you've been in construction, you know the path of least resistance is what they're going to take, and they're not going to have to haul those any longer than they have to. So, I think it'll work itself out. I think, given the HOA function, I think, given the single builder, I think, given a new entrance there, those three things are really going to shift kind of the day-to-day functions of what you may be a person.
All right. Commission, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay.
Or do you have further comments and questions? Appreciate everyone sharing their concerns and having a chance to dialogue between the developer and the current neighbors.
Okay, I, I make a motion.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah.
That's possible. Make a motion with the road being changed or?
I make a motion to approve with that the east side of the Green Belt not have adjusted sizes for lots. That would be my suggestion. But, hold on. Okay. Is that the only? And with the road. Okay. The road extension on the south? The road extension? That's on that south portion they discussed. And that the, the east side be maintained to be consistent with the existing Mission Hill. Right. And then, does that include the rest of the staff recommendation conditions? Which would include the allowance of the exceptions? Yes, on the other, on the, on the, on the west side. Right. Right. But the only change would be is the east side. Now, again, it's one of those things I have to ask because compatibility, I can have everybody in here, and everybody's going to have a different answer. So, when you say consistent, is that a 10,000-square-foot lot, a 7,000-square-foot lot, a 15,000-square-foot lot? Because, again, to me, that's important because we need. I thought we were talking about 250 feet a lot. Or are you just saying that those have to be 6,000 square feet? Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood, Joe. Okay, I thought you meant to be, okay, so that's on the east side. Consistent with the, not granting them the PUD on the east side. Is, am I saying that correctly? Okay. So, you're taking out the eastern portion, so everything on the eastern portion would have to be per our current code. So, they're going to have to have wider rightaways, the setbacks, the lot size, all that stuff you say no to the east side and okay on the west side? Yes. Okay, I'm just, again, my clarity as well as everybody else's. I got it. But that's just my motion. No, no, right, yeah, I understand. And like I said, I'm just trying to clarify, so I understand as well. Because I didn't quite understand, now I do.
Quick, quick question for clarity. Is it okay if we build sidewalks, if we, if we, on the east side?
Yes, actually, that's required by code.
Okay, all right. Good. We really believe in building sidewalks.
Oh, yeah. Our, our code requires that, so that's non-negotiable, I guess.
So, we have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
So, could you repeat the motion for me again?
Okay. And I can go ahead if I want. The motion is, is that the eastern portion, the portion that connects with the existing Mission Hills, would not be allowed any exceptions that have been requested under the PUD. So, again, the minimum lot size would have to be 6,000 square feet. The minimum rightaway would have to be 60-foot wide. And so, the setbacks would have to be 25 feet front, you know, the R1. So, all of that would apply. It would have to meet minimum code just in that. The portion that is to the west, that is on the other side of the Green Belt, would then be recommending saying, all the exceptions that have been requested, allowing that to happen on that portion.
Could I ask you another question in here? Is your roads included in the survey on the lots or they are completely separate? Are they included in a buildable lot? Your street, your roads?
No, they're separate public rights of way.
So, the survey, they're saying a 6,000-square-foot, this is buildable lot? It's not including the lot? I mean, including the roads?
Right.
And does that include the new access point as well?
Yes, and I'm sorry, and that was the road extension that is on that southern part that would connect into Prairie Grove. Yes.
I'll second.
Motion and a second.
And, and, I'm sorry, you seconded it?
Yes, I did.
Okay, got it.
Okay, any further discussion? Ready to vote?
Yes. Joe Chappell?
Yes.
Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
And Chris Bryant?
Yes.
3-0. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, so the public knows, the planning commission is the recommendation body on this, so it will go to the council and they will have the final decision. They have the ability to take the planning commission's recommendation, they can change that, or they, you know, however it may be, but they have the final. That meeting, or this item, will be going to the first meeting in February at the City Council, which is February 2nd. So, you would all have the ability, obviously, to attend that and also have, if you sign up, to speak at that meeting as well. But I think it's important to understand, this is a recommendation, one more step for the final approval. Thank you.
Is that where you registration to speak?
No, just when you show up to the meeting, yeah, you sign up, yeah. When you show up to the meeting, you have the ability to sign up, yeah.
All right, our next item is number eight. Now, are we able to, yes, sir?
We were discussing that. I know, thank you for bearing with us. Could you give us two minutes? We want to make sure, we want to mechanically speaking, what makes sense with this plat because, obviously, we want to make sure it lines up with what was just.
Yeah, that was just, my comment was just to that effect.
So, if you would just give us a minute before we go to this item to figure out what makes the most sense in terms of.
Sure.
And that's fine, because we can essentially wait till the end on that one, because we have two other items after this. So, we can go ahead with those items as you discuss. Because, yeah, obviously, the plat now is going to have to be consistent with the site plan or the development plan that was approved, or recommended approval for the PUD. So, we'll come back to that and we'll move the next two items up.
Okay. So, we're now at item nine, PC application, number 20-015, discussion and possible action on a request to rezone a property located at 811 South Division Street, located at the southwest corner of University Avenue and South Division Street from A1, General Agricultural District, to C2, General Commercial. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was about to say, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman. Forgot what meeting I was at. The, this property is located directly south of the Sonics, right there at University and Division. It's also one of those where we have a lot of, essentially, the existing zoning is not consistent or has not been consistent with most of the uses that have been on the property. Recently, the property to the south, which is the next item, south of this, as well as this property, has new ownership in the one and a new leasing in the other. And so, as part of that process, we had discussions of, hey, this is a good time as ever to bring the zoning more consistent with that area in the uses that have been there. So, as indicated, it's currently zoned agriculture. It would go to C2, which is the zoning with most of the properties along that Division corridor in that. So, with that, staff would recommend that you approve the rezone request.
Make the motion for approval.
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded? Okay, Chris, thank you. Okay, Chris, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, we, I didn't realize somebody was here. Yes, no.
I'm Angelo DePasse Squali. I have Shines Quick Loop at 701 South Division. All the dirt work they're doing now, is that going to affect our flooding in that area?
No.
Because I see a lot of dirt work going on.
Yeah, and, and I can answer your question. You're correct. Currently, right now, they're basically doing what we call like brush removal. As you saw, they're taking some trees down and, and even uprooting the trees themselves and that, so they haven't done any dirt work. They do intend to do that down the road, some dirt work, and they will be required to get a permit. We've been in conversation with them, and so they understand. And it's going to be also on the other side of Division where they work in both sides. The biggest one will be where they're by the family Dollar, is it Family Dollar now? Or Dollar Tree, I'm sorry, I forget which one comes in and goes. Anyway, the, in that. And so there'll be the permits, and just like we had with the subdivision, you know, there's going to be the engineer and the plans to make sure with the flood zone issues, the drainage issues, it's all taken care of on-site and that. So, yeah, that will be all accommodated as they move forward with development.
Okay, so we're not going to have any more flooding than what we've had in the past?
I will say that it should improve the area. However, I don't think even an engineer can guarantee that Mother Nature may not flood. Yeah.
Well, I'm seeing, like I said, I'm seeing a lot of dirt work, and I'm seeing a lot of the, where the flood goes in, the, the channels that were there are not there now. They have been doing dirt work and taking channels out as far as relief channels. To me, they're, they're relief-
Okay. Are you talking across the street from you?
I'm talking across the street from us right now.
Yeah, across from you, that's not our- Yeah, I mean, it isn't this, but I, I understand your question then, that, yeah. I can say that, you know, again, we've been in communication with them and we're going to make sure that things are taken care of, so again, it does not have a negative impact on, on adjacent properties. It looks awful.
Looks a lot better.
I remember, right, you're giving us all-
It's really sad, really.
Thank you.
But thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't realize there was somebody else here for the-
Is anybody else here to speak on, on this item?
On this item.
All right, so we have a motion and a second.
Yes. All right, Joe Chappell?
Yes.
Abe Gassimport?
Yes.
And Chris Bryant?
Yes.
All right, three oh.
Okay, item 10, PC application number 20-016, discussion and possible action on a request to rezone a property located at 819 South Division Street, the west side of Division Street, just south of University Avenue, from A1, General Agricultural, to C2, General Commercial. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, the same situation, this is the one that actually turned over an ownership. And again, through that process, we're trying to bring the existing uses that have been on there and the future uses and that to the zoning that should be there, which is C2 in that. So with that, much like the other one, staff recommends that you approve it from A1 to C2.
Any questions, comments? Anyone here to speak on this item?
Make a motion for approval.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? Oh, thanks, Joe.
Second.
Second was Abe? Okay, thank you. Joe Chappell?
Yes.
Abe Gassimport?
Yes.
Chris Bryant?
Yes.
Okay, three oh. All right, now we can go back to the preliminary platform.
All right, back to item eight. I'm going to read the item and then you can present what you have. This is a PC application number 20-013, discussion and possible action on a request for approval of a preliminary subdivision plat for 314 residential lots on a 95 and a half acre parcel to be known as Mission Hills Phase Two, located in the southwest quarter of Section 20, Township 16 North, Range Two West, between Davis Road and the existing Mission Hills Residential Subdivision.
Good evening again, Mason Schwartz, 522 Callport Drive. Given what was just recommended for approval with the conditions on item seven, we would ask that this item be deferred. Obviously, what's before you is not exactly with what the conditions were on item seven. So the way mechanically that'll work is, we will wait for council to issue the final decision on the zoning on its own. If approved, then we'll come back before this planning commission with a new version of the plat to match what the conditions are and go from there.
Okay.
So for, I, for now, I would say, I don't know what the dates are when this commission convenes next, off the top of my head, I would say let's-
It's the second Thursday of every month. Yeah, which, hold on here.
We'll ask to defer to that, and we might, you know, depending on how the timing works out, we might have to defer again.
That would be February 11th.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you want to continue it to date certain, to kind of keep the chain, if you want to say, going on, that's fine, in that we, you know, can do that.